I'm going far away.
Well, I know Doug Hall won't be here today. He's got some work to do. I don't know about Justin, so.
I won't be here. I'm going to take this. Yeah, if I do this.
We got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you ready? Walk as fast as you want.
Would you like me to see if Justin's coming or we just want to go?
Go ahead to the chair.
Yeah, if somebody's going to be here and they're not Doug, they're on time. Call the new order. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, be with us this evening as we do the business for the city and the good and the welfare of the community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you everybody for being here. The item C, approval of agenda.
I make the motion with agreement. I'll second. On your favor.
Aye. Item D, citizens' comments. Just wanted to last listen if they want to come to this point. Three minutes. Guests will often comment, but they must take their full manner of words off.
Are you here to come in or?
Nope.
In case you recognize who was the lady behind the mask, it's the city pro at Alumis Neon. She spoke on the sign ordinance once upon a time in 2019, if you remember. She's here to.
Record her eyes.
That's pretty good if you remember that far back.
Do you want to close this portion, Mr. Chair? We can move on.
Yes.
All right, I need approval of the minutes. And just a quick recap. June 8, 2020, the was adopted as a vote on the city planner report consisted of floor relief, lot splits, and boundary line adjustment, sign ordinance draft, and city development map. We spoke briefly about what we would consider then in terms of sign ordinance draft. We did present the city development map, which is a dynamic map looking for jump around, look at evaluations, property taxes, et cetera. And we talked about floor relief and how they did that sort of design amendment. And it's going to require boundary line adjustment, which can get approved in my office, but the lot splits are going to have to be approved by the planning commission every single time they do a lot split, which will be a requirement because they want to change the design to twin homes instead of duplexes or single families. So that's going to require the planning commission review.
Motion on the minutes.
I'll make motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second. On your favor.
Aye. And F for zoning deals, there is none. Item G, old business. I'm going to talk a little bit about the sign ordinance draft as a quick background. 2016, the city adopted new guidelines regulating signage of the citizens of Goddard. The new regulations required businesses with pole signs to convert them to monument signs through December 31st of 2021. In addition to this, specific zoning classifications prohibited the use of certain types of signs within that zoning classification. This has caused consternation amongst commercial businesses as certain businesses felt that this might be too costly or cost prohibitive, or that monument signs did not meet the marketing needs for being located along the US 54. October 12th, 2019, City Planner E. myself presented a revised sign ordinance, which included some of the changes mentioned. Ultimately, this revision was tabled not formally adopted, and as such, that should move to a working draft that's being presented today. The planning commission will review and provide feedback on what they think should be added or removed to improve the sign ordinance. Ultimately, too, we would bring it before the governing body for comments and feedback, and we would seek the opinion, not only of the city pro at Alumis Neon, but also of commercial businesses at large, trying to get the most refined sign ordinance moving forward, and then finally be brought for adoption before the planning commission. So these are just some of the changes that have, they are included, sign ordinances included in your document package, so you can review that as well. These are some of the changes. One, December 31st, 2021, amortization deadline has been removed. Just a quick note, none of these are finalized right now. The current sign ordinance as it stands with the one from 2016, that's in effect. This is a working draft. If you guys, if anybody on the planning commission feels that we should keep it, please let me know. If you feel like the amortization was too cost prohibitive, let me know. We can talk about striking it. All of these are suggestions. This is what I felt like was the best moving forward with the planning commission and the feedback from the commercial businesses. We will continue to refine this moving forward. All of your opinions and thoughts related to the sign ordinance will be drafted, written down, and we will use that to amend it yet again, and we'll keep amending it until we have what we feel is the best sign ordinance. So all of these are currently what we've changed, but if you feel like that change is inaccurate or ineffectual, then we can go ahead and put them back in. So for one thing, we went ahead and removed the 2021 amortization deadline. One reason I thought that was a good idea simply from speaking with some pro at Alumis Neon from 2019, amortization was one of the reasons that some cities were sued by businesses because they felt the amortization was too restricted. It didn't give them enough time to change, you know. So some amortizations that were adopted by previous cities had amortizations up to 15 years. So something to consider if you did want an amortization, perhaps you would want to extend it longer, or we just strike it entirely, and maybe have an incremental change if they wanted to design, if they wanted to change the sign, or redo it to a more modern version. This came directly from the city attorney. New verbiage added that clearly states no signs denied based on their content. There was a lawsuit, I can't remember that basis of lawsuit, but the city was sued because they denied signage based on coverage. It's against one of the, it's considered free speech protected law. So we added that into the current draft that you have in front of you, and so that clearly states that no one's going to have their sign denied based on what that sign says. Excepting pole signs that were considered grandfathered in and will not need to be converted to monument signs. So once again, that kind of goes a lot of number one. This is a strong opinion of several business owners that they didn't want to change their pole signs because of the fact they felt that if it switched to a monument sign and the signage was reduced, they will visit, cars as they travel along US 54 would not be able to recognize it. So I went ahead and removed it on draft, but once again, these are all opinions. We can add it back in. We can talk about amortization. All these things are open for discussion. A sign agent will be used to determine what sign tags may be placed next to a business, and it will be predicated on the speed limit of the adjacent street that is included in the sign draft. Basically, the way it used to be was that you have, certain signs were allowed based on the zoning classification. Now it's written that zoning classification and speed limit dictates what kind of sign you're allowed. Sign hives and quantities are based on the signatures as well, so that's one thing that goes a lot of that. This doesn't show up very well with the light, but I'll ask you guys to have a take a look at it. Basically, what we have is several different criteria here. One is quantity, the zoning classification, and the speed limit. I will say that one thing I noticed from the zoning classification that presented a problem was that there's a whole, not a lot, but there are several non-conformant land uses. For example, squiggles and giggles is considered commercial, but it's in a zoning, it's on a zoning lot, that's R1. And so it'd be difficult for somebody who wanted to replace squiggle and giggle sign to look at this nature to make a determination of what they were allowed, because right now we don't have residential on here. Or is it a residential lot that has a commercial business, or is it a commercial business that's on a residential lot, and they would have to look at that to make the determination? So I think some of the criteria that we could add would be based on land use, not zoning lot. That way it'd make a little bit more specific if somebody had a non-conforming use, what exactly they were allowed. We also noticed they don't have residential on here, and that's because most of the residential signage that comes up is going to be signs that are already sort of exempt from the regulations, like political signs on private property. That's perfectly allowed to be, those are considered exempt. Signs that happen to go into a subdivision like Seasons, or if they wanted to change that, I added new text that said those are exempt because they're maintained and managed by HOA fees, and so I figured those should be exempt and allow certain design criteria there, as long as they're in the designer view of the HOA. Another one would be what we've noticed, and it's come up again, is that every time we add a new subdivision, they want a large marketing sign. Under our current regulations, they could only really have a sign that's 16 square feet. And all of them want to have a sign that's 150 or maybe 100 square feet. Our current sign regulations don't allow for that. That's why we had to have Arbor Creek go through that sign variance request to build a bigger sign. I currently have it listed in our sign regulations to make them exempt, so that they could go ahead and pull exempt from the regulations while not exempt from the permit. So they could go ahead and draft a larger sign, but still pull a permit, but the regulations wouldn't apply to them so that there wouldn't be a minimum square footage. And that would be for marketing purposes only for subdivisions, since we don't see them very often. They only come about when there's a new subdivision, which happens every 10 years or so. So that's one reason. And another reason would be simply we don't want a lot of signs in residential subdivisions, or we don't want them on residential lots if at all. Most of them are temporary signs, like I said, political signs that go up and go down every four years, or real estate marketing signs, a small sign that says house for sale. So, but those are just flaws for that. Zory Adams, none, approved as a form legally speaking. There is no action required. This is receive and file only. Any comments on the planning commission will be received. We'll document it. It's being recorded right now, and we will use it to amend the sign ordinance draft, the sign regulation draft. So it's open, open floor right now for comments and questions.
Can you go back to that table?
Yes.
So the only difference I'm seeing is that in any of them is that 50 to 60, there's, you can have a pole sign.
Basically, yeah. And that's why I wanted to put this up there, not because I really hammered out the quantities. The quantities are sort of subjective. I put it up there just kind of as a basis for reference. I'm not 100% sure how we want to handle quantities. There's a big problem that we see there, the obvious problem being you have one business that says it's mandatory by my suppliers, I need to have three signs, and that's something that's come up before. But then, of course, you allow a certain amount of signs, and then it immediately switches to a liquor store, and you have every single conceivable marketing sign just plastered across the whole building. And so that in-between is a sweet spot, and I have yet to find it, so I'm just opening it up to the discussion room.
What is the difference between a freestanding, and I'm sorry if this is already in there, I couldn't log in, but so I just have trouble. So between a freestanding sign, a temporary sign, and a portable sign?
Right. Those are all sort of different definitions. I define them in the sign ordinance. Basically, what I noticed is that there was a sort of an in-between gray area between a pole sign and a monument sign. And for example, you would see, a pole sign is what you would traditionally think of it being, a metal round pole, two legs or one leg, and it goes up and it's got a large sign. A monument sign is about very clear criteria. It's got a base, it's, you know, half the width of basically the signage that comes down. It's got very clear, a certain amount of materials used for the base. A freestanding sign is sort of in-between the two. It's freestanding because it's not attached to a business or a building or primary structure, but it still might have like two 2x4s, a traditional marketing sign like you would see over in Arbor Creek. That would be considered a freestanding sign. It's not a pole sign. It's not a monument sign. It's just a freestanding sign. A temporary sign is basically what you would see on every corner of every city in the whole world, which is basically, you know, open house, garage sale. Those are what you would see. Those are traditional signs. My predecessor called them bandit signs because they're in and out all the time. Portable signs are actually prohibited currently under the sign regulations. I didn't make them prohibited because there was a strange design faux pas that I saw there, and I was trying to address it, and I don't know how to address it, so I'm trying to refine it a little bit. So I'm glad you guys are here so you can suffer with me. The portable sign originally was prohibited because of the fact that you would have a sign on a wagon or something along those lines. You would have it have wheels, and you'd lift it up and you'd move it. They are incredible eyesore. But what happens is under the traditional definitions of a portable sign, farmer's market wouldn't be allowed to have that, you know, farmer's market sign on the side of a van or something that's posted. So there's sort of a design element there. One of them looks good, one of them looks terrible. Both of them are considered portable signs, so how do you prohibit one without prohibiting the other? How do you allow that free design expression, which actually can look good without, you know, while at the same time simultaneously removing all the ugly ones that are on A-frames with those little wheels that get lifted up and dropped? And so right now I have them listed as 000, but I'm open to more refined design criteria for portable signs.
Could be more of the use, because you said like a farmer's market, so it's like it's a, if it's a permanent structure, I mean, if you have a building, then you couldn't have a portable sign. But if it's something temporary use, like you said, a farmer's market or a food truck or something like that, then you could have it.
But how would that exempt little trailer signs? They would fall into the same thing, like, well, Lions Club for years had a little wagon sign for fireworks. So how do you say, okay, farmer's market can have one on the side of the truck?
Well, I would think that would be the same thing, because the fireworks tend to be temporary.
So then it's okay to have both kinds of signs? And that's the problem, or that's the rub, is we want to be able to dictate what kind of signs we allow? Am I making sense, or?
Basically, they don't want signs with wheels on them.
But I mean, it's like if it's, if you have a, I have, I mean, if I'm an insurance company and I have a building, then, and I'm just throwing this out there, you know, no sign, but like you said, farmer's market, fireworks stand.
Food truck.
Food truck, something temporary, then my sign is part of my temporary moving and then moving out.
Yeah, because other than like the firecracker, it's changing like either one of them. What about the signs like McDonald's, Big Mac sale strewn across the front of the?
Banners and are somewhat exempt from the, from the zoning sign ordinances already. They're considered private property banners. They're temporary. There are the exempt from the sign regulations.
They didn't used to be, and that's my question.
Yeah, in 2016, they became exempt because they hire the property and the flags and emblems and such.
Yeah, where are the, the post, the flag signs, those top flag signs, the companies on and catalog are putting out, which category are those?
Which one are we talking about?
Oh, like, I know the.
Like the cell phone company, the big, that's a six-foot pole with the signs that just white flapping in the breeze.
Right, right. That would be considered a, you know, a freestanding sign depending on how you look at it, or a temporary sign. So it's either one of those depending on what it, kind of the composition of it, we have to make a determination. But if it's independent of any structure, but there's no business that goes with it, I would consider it a temporary sign. But if it's next to a, if it's next to a business and sort of freestanding, I would consider that a freestanding sign.
You differentiated between, and I guess I'm thinking for mayor and the liquor store, and probably not appropriate to name names, but if one company, their vendors say you have to advertise for us on the front of your building, and the other one decides that they're going to use a siding, what, where do we fall in that? Do we ever need?
I denied one company, it will remain nameless, but there was one company that wanted to have three signs on the front of the building. I denied them based on the fact that we only allowed one of each type of sign, and technically the signs that they wanted were three of one type of sign on the front of the business. It was considered a wall sign. And the wall sign and the roof sign and the projecting sign, all of them have certain criteria. Technically, all three of these fall under, fell under a wall sign, and under our current sign ordinance, there are only around half one. So I told this business that they only have two options. One, they're only approved for one sign, or they can pull a variance and come before the planning commission to get approved for three. That's the way it's currently listed. So that's why the quantity kind of comes into play there. Those definitions help refine what type of sign it is. So there's general regulations, sign types, and quantity, or, you know, based on location, speed limits, and type. And that's kind of how the sign regulations are written, and as you can see, it can, it's, it can be subjective based on interpretation of what kind of criteria falls on a sign type, but.
What about percentage of wall face that the sign can be? Isn't that in the ordinance, or it used to be?
No, not currently. Right now it's based on sign type and zoning classification.
Okay.
If you're on a corner lot, for example, you have two frontages, and so you can have, for example, a wall sign can be on one side of a corner lot and on the other side, because you're considered to have two frontages touching two different roads. But if you're on just a center lot, and you have a business on one side, a business on the other, and you're facing the street, then your, then your wall sign is facing that one frontage, and that's it. So you can only allow one. then your, then your wall sign is facing that one frontage, and that's it, so you can only allow one. Excuse me, it's hard to talk right this time. Feel like I'm eating it from inside.
So what, uh, what control do we have over the, the bottom of the sign, the, you know, because I'm, I'm back to what, when we first started talking about this, and we wanted them to have these nice pretty signs, but their parking lots were less than desirable, and, and everything else around what the sign was going to be, you know, looks like, looks horrible. You know, do we have any control over that with their sign?
I would consider those two separate issues, one of them would be sort of the maintenance of the building and the lot, and the other one is the sign regulation. Sign regulations, they take one could be on that lot, the lot maintenance would be a separate issue, code enforcement. Or if there's a new business moving in, general requirements with the business.
And I know we talked some about, you know, upkeep and maintenance on them.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, I didn't see that in your list of changes.
No, I didn't include any of that in the list of changes, uh, it's something that we can be added, um, based on any recommendations from planning commission.
And my thought on that is, you know, I mean, you know, if you have a pole sign up there, and, you know, as I've driven down, up and down Kellogg, you know, pay more attention to the sign. You know, it's, if a pole sign looks, I mean, nice today, no matter really what the design is, five years from now, ten years from now, if they don't keep it up, it doesn't matter how pretty it was at the beginning, or how well-built it was at the beginning, it's going to look bad, if they don't maintain it.
Yeah, certainly, so that's something that can be added, is just the general maintenance of keeping the signs.
Does that differentiate between the, the code enforcement of the building and the sign, is, is that two separate issues?
Uh, hmm, not necessarily, I think it can be included in sign ordinance regulations, and then we could just have it be addressed in the subdivision regulations, sometimes code falls under subdivision regulations, for example, the placement of RVs is not necessarily in the code of the city of Goddard, but it's in the subdivision regulations, so prohibits where an RV can be on, on the subdivision regulations, but doesn't prohibit where an RV can be in the code regulations. So it's just a matter of enforcement, and I think we could have it included in the sign regulations, and then it can be enforced just as easily.
What, on, for the number of signs, what's, I mean, what have you guys found that's normal in other small cities?
This is pretty typical, I mean, you're gonna have, I mean, really, it varies, but you're gonna, one thing that I've seen is that the wall signs vary in terms of how many can you have on the frontage, facing the road. Um, generally, people want more, uh, and so that's, that's what I've seen, and that's kind of what I've run into.
I mean, I could see, like, even if you just have one of each, then you could get kind of crazy and cluttered and ugly with, well, I have one of each.
You'd be surprised, businesses don't want to spend too much, they want to spend enough to be recognized, and, you know, obviously, you know, Sintra might have something else to say about that, but from the most, from what I understand, is that businesses want to do the most they can with the least amount of money. Uh, so they're going to spend what they can to maximize visibility and marketing potential without spending as much as they possibly can, so. Just because they're given, for example, you might look up there and say, oh, if I'm in commercial, I could have one, two, three, four questions today. It's not necessarily true, for example, the way it's written right now, you can't have a monument sign and a pole sign, I have it written in the code currently, in the new draft, that if you're going for a monument sign, you can't have a pole sign.
Okay, yeah.
But also, when you actually look at what is required, and the different terminology of a wall sign versus a roof sign, um, it, it, they're, they're not going to want to spend that money
Right.
to have those, that many amount of signs, because none, none of them are going to be that visible.
And for the, the, like, the pole sign and the monument sign, are we still keeping and having, or, you know, height, rate, height specifications and?
Yes, there's still going to be the high regulations that go with that, and if they want to exceed those high regulations, it'd be under the variance.
Is it understood now that if a new business goes in, they're required to do a monument sign rather than a pole sign? If a grandfather in the old pole sign.
Technically, they can still do a pole sign, but they would have to change that pole sign to a monument sign by twenty twenty-one, so there'd be no reason for them to do it. Um, when they agree to regulations, we would talk about it, um, and they would realize they could only have, technically, they could only have a pole sign for another year and a half. And then they'd have to convert it to a monument sign almost immediately, and so for them, they, it'd be more cost-effective to just build a monument sign.
I thought, I thought you were talking about taking that out.
Oh, I thought you meant as it stands right now, sorry, there's two different as it stands, as it stands in terms of the draft that's in front of you, versus as it stands in what's included right now on current sign regulations, that can be enforced. So, the, the ones that can be enforced now, they would have to convert by twenty twenty-one, as it stands in this draft, they could pull a pole sign, they could do a pole sign.
Let me ask you a technicality question.
Mm-hmm.
What is the speed limit in front of those businesses in Kellogg?
It depends on where the business is located, we, it's six become an in the Goddard, then it drops to, I believe it's fifty.
But, but, technically, so I'm just asking, technically, they're not on the highway.
On the frontage.
The frontage road where the speed limit is thirty.
Oh, I see what you're saying, sure.
Is that going to be a technicality we're going to have issues with?
Or do we just put the max, like, put the maximum speed limit?
Because, because, I mean, realistically, I, there's, there's, the bank is really the only one that touches that, because they still own the, they still own the frontage road.
Yeah, that's a technicality, so that'd be an interesting point to discuss, and maybe that'd be something that would have to be revised.
You know, we could, we could, and we could say, yeah, sure, fifty to sixty can have a pole sign, and then, once we're there, we can say, well, but realistically, you're on the thirty mile an hour road.
That's true.
And we're not going to accomplish anything, besides making the mat again. So I'm just wondering.
Unless you gave them a, a footage allowance for that.
Yeah, or just said, like, the maximum on that frontage, I mean, the maximum speed limit on the frontage, but then within.
But in order, the next group, the next group, it could nitpick it to death and say, well, realistically, you know, follow to the pole sign.
Is it going to remain fifty to sixty out there, Harold, you think?
Fifty, I think is, the low is going to go with the, on, on the fifty-four, yeah.
Oh, that's a good question.
So anyway, just throwing that in there.
No, it's a good point, so we should definitely consider maximum frontages, and, uh, consider that.
Because I was, I was just curious what, uh, like, what would Walmart be considered, what's the start line area? You know, do they fall off of?
They have, uh, they have an architectural requirement standard that go into the Goddard Galeria, so, but I think Walmart's exempt from those standards.
But I'm just saying, that, that quarter, they're all far enough back to where they're going to be upset.
Right, but what's their address, though? What's like Ace Hardware, what's their address say?
Kellogg, I think.
Yeah, so they're Kel, on Kellogg, they could argue at all.
Right, no, I, I'm not suggesting that we, we would, we would say no, I just didn't want anyone else to say, well, the loophole here is you don't technically sit on the fifty mile an hour road.
But they, they would come back and use their address.
Okay, which is great, I, so I'm not, I'm not suggesting you would, I just think, I wouldn't want anyone to split.
No, that's a good point, no, that's true.
You know, you're not, you're not really on this highway.
Right.
Even your address, you know, so anyway.
Yeah, that's a good point, the subject of interpretation.
Same too, how far back are you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the sidelines could always be argued too, I mean, if you were off.
Yeah.
You know, even if the egress was called something different, they could argue that their sidelines were in Kellogg, you know.
A wording, semantic issue.
Yeah, good luck.
It's actually Kellogg Drive.
Yeah. So is that the?
That's the thirty mile an hour.
That's the thirty, okay, okay.
So you've got a good point.
Yeah.
Yep.
Not that you're supposed to be dealing with, but.
No, this is not.
Better to take care of it now than later.
This is why it's been presented for refinement, so.
The farmer's market, the sign you're talking about, is it considered a temporary sign?
Yeah, I would consider it temporary.
That'd settle that problem for that, and a food truck, as long as it's not one of those ones that you can plug in, with the bigger arrow and lights, and put the letters in, and get the wheels on it.
Yeah.
I don't think, as long as you limit the timeframe too, you can, you can help with that.
No.
I'm worried about timeframe simply because if somebody exceeds that timeframe, is what they require, they're, it's to come back through the planning commission to, you know, that, that's kind of where, temporary in my mind is, is, it's not going to exceed the year, you know, or it's, it's done, and then it'll stop again. If it's reoccurring where it gets pulled down and put back up for, like, for example, the farmer's market, um, then that would be considered temporary. Um, but yeah, there, obviously, there's a lot of subject to interpretation, and so that's, that's something to think about.
Yeah, I just make sure our definitions are, I mean, they look clear, but make sure our definitions are very clear.
Mm-hmm.
You know, include examples or?
Yes, that's a good question, we could, you know, we could actually include examples in there, pictures, to say, in case you're wondering, this is a pole sign, this is what we think a pole sign is.
Right.
Um, so that, that might be helpful too.
No, examples, specifications.
Another work in progress is, is the only way to address this. It just seems like it's kind of ongoing forever.
That's what I'm about there.
Well, you know, I wonder if this could be as simple as going with the speed limit and then putting a basic parameters height, width, you know, and then say that something along the lines that signage needs to be approved, maybe not then in person, but it needs to be sent in to you, and then?
I think that's the problem that came up in the last one, is that, and, you know, when we were discussing this last time, it became sort of subjective. If, the more subjective it is, the more open to bias potential, or an argument for bias, and so on. Um, it becomes difficult for a contractor to say, I'm submitting this bid to build a sign if there is some subjectivity in there, because they don't know what I'm going to say, but it is good, if we can refine it as much as possible to say, this is what we were looking for. Or at least say, this is the slate that you have, anything that falls within that slate, that's what you're saying, anything that falls within those parameters, we will approve. Because then the review process is very minimal, it's simply, is it hitting this height, this width, this composition, then we're good, and then we just move forward from there.
But I wonder if all signs aren't sent in for, for, I know, I know that, not to be too, you know, like, judgmental on something's design or something like that, but if every signage comes across your desk.
It's true, yeah.
Um, then you have the opportunity, otherwise, their interpretation of what you've written as the criteria for, say, a monument sign, they, they could interpret it. Uh, I mean, it'd have to be really solid, you see what I'm saying?
I understand.
Yeah, really solid.
Yeah, that's true, and there is that level of interpretation.
Because then, once it starts to go up, I mean, it's hard to stop, you know, it's hard to stop something that, if somebody took that, that they interpreted, that they fit all the criteria that you put out for a monument sign, and they started up, and you, you go out there and go, whoa, 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 hold on, hold on, you've got space underneath this whole half. That's no longer a monument sign, and then it's kind of like, then you get to where you're like, okay, go ahead, and then the next person does it, and you're like, oh, okay, go ahead.
No, it's true.
You just can't, you've lost control, because you haven't seen it.
Yeah.
But isn't anything permanent going to come in through one of the approval processes anyways?
Yes, almost like, and it, most, so, there are small exceptions where businesses might, well, I mean, for most part, they're usually new businesses, or somebody else that, you know, putting up some sign for marketing purposes or whatever, we'll catch them and say, hey, you didn't pull a sign permit or whatever, but most sign companies know they need a sign permit.
Right.
Sign permit triggers a review in my office, where I'm just evaluating it, as, as I mentioned with that one business, they wanted to put up three wall signs. Uh, and I, I worked with them really hard to try to make those wall signs into something else that it wasn't. And it was actually kind of difficult, because they're clearly not this sign, and so it's sort of a process of elimination, it's like, this is not a roof sign, it wasn't a pole sign, it wasn't a monument sign, it's clearly, all three were wall signs, and so that review process, it's like, sorry, you can only have one sign.
So you're saying, when you go through the, when they pull a permit, you'll see their, what their design is?
Yes.
And so that, so the, the point of having specs in the sign ordinance is to just minimize the number of rework and, you know,
Yes, yeah.
that might potentially happen.
Yes, yes.
So does it say that, that when they go to apply for a sign permit, that you see it, a visual of it, or are they just filling out some kind of form, I guess I haven't seen them.
Well, the form itself is, I believe it says that they have to submit a sketch or a drawing, I could go back and look at the application, but.
There, there you go, I mean, that's, that's it, then at least you give the chance to.
And even if I didn't, I'd still tell them I need to see something, you know, and most, most businesses know that, I haven't, uh, there's a rare example, I think, of somebody saying, here's the application, and there's no images to follow.
Right.
Now, that's kind of rare, in which case they get a, a reply email that this is not approved until I see some sort of design to reflect what you're proposing, and that's.
The sign companies are kind of hand in hand with gra, I mean, graphics is what they do
Right.
to start with, so they're probably pretty proud of it.
No, ultimately, yeah, what they're sending to me is what they showed their client, and their client has approved it, and so they won the bid, or whatever it is, and and then that is what arrives on my desk, and so then I'm looking at it, and, you know, varying degrees of technicality and detail, and color, no color, et cetera, but the image comes across pretty clear of what it is, and it falls into those criteria, so. The only one, the only reason why I added a freestanding sign is because I didn't know how to define a marketing sign for a subdivision, because not a pole sign, it's not a monument sign, it's not a roof sign, it's not, you know, it didn't fall into any of those. It wasn't a portable sign, um, and I actually added a temporary sign on there, so clearly, it wasn't a wall sign, and so I threw that one in there as well, because now we're going to see more of them. Um, but I also made cer, certain ones of them, and I thought about, is there anything else that might be considered a freestanding sign, and so that, something that's not, well, not a monument, but freestanding from the primary structure, not temporary, but maybe more permanent, so there's a lot that kind of goes into that. How do you define a sign?
Well, and then the brightness of it, because it glares, such an issue, um, that's going to be another something
Right.
we'll have to dictate if it's not already in there.
Right, and I don't, I think for elimination purposes, and I haven't seen any of the marketing signs that are going to be illuminated for a subdivision, they're all pretty stained.
Yeah.
But that's not going to be included, so.
Well, didn't, didn't we talk about subdivision signs aren't necessarily temporary per se, because until the?
Because of longevity, yeah.
Yeah.
But they're, they're not built to be permanent, so it's sort of the intent of the sign comes into play, because a, a sign that's intended to be more permanent for the life of the business and then onward, to be a pole sign, a monument sign, et cetera, whereas a marketing sign of subdivision sign is meant to have the life of, you know, the life of the built subdivision until the occupancy is done, and then the sign, generally speaking, goes away, because there's nothing left to sell, so then the marketing sign comes down. So intent kind of comes into play there, is that, is that permanent, and, you know, or is that temporary, or what's the intent behind the sign? Ultimately, the intent is to remove that sign down once all the lots are sold, and leave the entry monument sign up, the one that walk, you know, the big elk ridge or clover leaf, and it's all stone, it's got wrought iron. That's a permanent sign that they want to have, as the long-lasting momental for that subdivision. The marketing sign is just big, garish, and large, to say, come buy a lot, or a house, and then to come down later, so it's, it's a, it's sort of an intent comes into play there.
Yeah, I, I mean, maybe, I mean, I don't, yeah, if that's really the only difference in the temporary and the freestanding, you know, when you look at, is that just a free, a temporary sign? I mean, we said, you know, the longevity is, so, it's, is more subjective thing, you know, I mean, it, it really is not, it really is temporary, it's just, it's not intended to be, but like you said, the life of.
Right, 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 that, that was one specific sign type that could be categorized as temporary, whereas there's other types of signs that may be freestanding, that's not a pole sign, a monument sign, or a residential marketing sign, that could fall in the freestanding. If you guys are exhausted from this topic, do not worry, it will be back on your table, and next, it will never, it will never end. Thank you for your commitment. It will never end. Thank you for your commitment, appreciate it. Should I move on?
Yeah, that's.
Your comments have been recorded, and I'll have a sound clip in which I'll document what you said, we'll take that into account for refinement, and, um, thank you for your time then. I have H1, new business, this is a North Park preliminary plat. Quick background, city of God, I purchased some land from the property owner paying the wildlife park at the corner of 183rd and Maple. This sign is intended to be used for the development of a public park, and as such, is going through the plating process for development. The plat will have to be revised later when the design of the park is approved, and the city knows where they want to place buildings and water, so it remains in streets. So right now, there's, they're not, we're not a hundred percent sure where we're gonna put everything. But we want to have a preliminary and a final plat approved, so we have it marked out. After which, when we've just gone through the formal design process, we will come up with sort of a, um. We will record a separate ease, a separate instrument for easements and everything else when we figure out where we're gonna put the mains, the sewer. Set where the drinking tubs, the bathrooms, everything else is gonna be. Uh, drainage plan will be drafted, the park layout has been determined, so typically what we require, anytime there's a plat, we require a drainage plan. Right now, since we don't know where everything's going, we would have to revise that drainage plan later, so we haven't drafted one formally right now. Uh, the final plat will be a manual design apartment, the final, why I just sort of talked about, all preliminary plat requirements have been met by senior engineer, approved by state planner. This is the design, I've zoomed in and propped a lot of stuff out, but you have the plat in your packet, so it'll have everything else that you need in there. The ledge in the north area, the danger of the north. If the planning permission is satisfied, the requirements hold applicable, some of these regulations have been, or will be met by the city, you may approve the preliminary plat, including any required changes. So there's recommended by the commission approve the preliminary plat as presented. Obviously, we're open to questions or comments. Part of the board, uh, uh, C D V represents the city, so if there's any engineering related questions, feel free to ask him. Uh, if there's any comments that, for changes, we can take that into consideration.
Does, does it sound to me like this is all kind of up in the air, so we're, we can't be very definitive. On anything un- until it's laid out.
Well, that's kind of what we're saying is that, right now, it's unplatted, so the whole land is unplatted, so we want to go ahead and get the plating done. And then when we have refined it to exactly when everyone, the governing body and everybody else agrees with where things are gonna be. We can go into a separate instrument and say, this is where we're gonna have things located exactly, for easement recordings and everything else. Um, this is so that we can have a clear delineation between us and the rest of the property owners around there, what's clearly our land versus their land. Because we're going to have certain properties that are within proximity to the North Park, are gonna have a fence going around them, and we don't want that fence to accidentally. Capture some of our land, so the plating process has to go forward for not only legal reasons, but it helps us set the boundaries of where our template is to design. That's kind of why we're having to move forward that way.
If I could, I might add, the park has ended up kind of being a compilation of several pieces from different tracts. And so right now, it's kind of confusing to know what is the overall configuration of the plat. And if you go back to the drawing, there's several lot lines in there from previous lots that are unplatted. And so it's kind of confusing, so I think the point maybe that Mike is trying to say is. By doing the plat, we can get that boundary established out there, and it can be established on the ground. So that, uh, the adjacent property owners, because for instance, you know, I think this. Coming down this far was part of a piece here, part of, uh, maybe, maybe part of, uh, uh, this part here was part of this, or vice versa, or something. And, and, and there's even a lot right here, so this was a, this was a separate parcel itself. So we're kind of molding, we're kind of combining all those together. This will end, the plat will create one, lot one, block A of the North Park addition, which will define its boundaries and. And combine all those individual segments of property into one piece. And so it should be, uh, more clearly defined, I think. Uh, for the city's behalf and maybe even for adjacent property owners, where the lines go. And, um, plating does, does more than simply define the boundary too, it becomes a legal document that we can work off of. It cleans up vacated easements and exist, and brings into existing easements, everything gets clearly defined and recorded with the register of deeds. So it actually gives us a legal document to work off of when we're actually designing the park. So there's no error where somebody could accuse us of co-opting land or working with land that doesn't belong to us. This becomes a clear definition of the area, we'll record easements, and anything that's, uh, that's a vacated easement becomes erased from that one, so. I do need to point out one error, I hate to admit that I, I did make an error, but this, uh, this, uh, is an act ingress egress easement here, and. It needs to be continued on up, from talking with Mike, I guess that was part of the agreement perhaps with the landowner, is that. That ingress egress easement needs to continue up to Maple to give that property owner down here permission to cross the city's property and get to a public access.
That's a good point.
So that is one thing I do need to add for that short segment.
Questions?
I would be contingent upon the. Proportion of that ingress egress. So we would just, the motion would be to approve the.
Yes, I would.
The preliminary plat has, as is with.
Approved.
Contingent upon the.
Yes.
Addition of the.
Ingress egress. Approved the preliminary plat, excuse me, contingent upon refining of the ingress egress.
What he said. I'll make a motion. Does that work or do I need to say?
Um, you can go ahead and say it, that'd be actually, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat as is with the addition of.
Contingent upon the.
North, the ingress egress.
Ingress egress.
Now we're second. I second it. Now, now we're voting again.
Aye.
And then the North Park, North Park final plat. So once again, it's the same, what you see here, we did buy the land, um, it's been revised, the sign department approved. Once again, the sign, the drainage part is, is, is important based on how much we want to put on that North Park. If we're gonna offset a lot of impervious surface, that would be where our fully parled, we'd say drainage plan would be contingent on that.
Well, yeah, the, I guess the, the thing I'd point out is, when we do a drainage plan, we typically look at existing conditions versus the developed conditions. So until we know what those developed conditions, how many rooftops, how many parking lots, how many those sorts of things are gonna have, it's a little difficult. Because we have to look at the comparison of those runoff, uh, stormwater runoff numbers from those to see what kind of, uh, improvements need to be made, so. Until we actually have, uh, like a, a, a site plan developed for the proposed park, it's difficult to develop a, a drainage plan. We, we can, we can show what the existing configuration of the surface drainage is, but that's, that's about the extent of it at this point, so.
And, and the point is, that really doesn't say anything, that, that doesn't address what it's gonna be.
No, no.
Waste of time. Basically, it's a waste of time. To, to show the drainage the way it is now without knowing what it's gonna be.
So are we looking for a motion on this?
This is kind of a, I just want to show you the image, it's in your packet as well, but this is the, uh, without the building. For prints of the existing building footprints and the trees and everything else.
And that did show the ease, but there didn't.
It did, okay, good, okay, good. So this is kind of a more clean up of what you can see. Final plaques, when you record them with the register of deeds of the county, they don't want to see all the trees and the building footprints, they want to see the easements. Uh, legal descriptions, they want to see lot lines and things of that nature, they don't want to see trees and contour lines and all that. So the preliminary plat is for the benefit of the city, so you can kind of see what's happening on the site as is and what's being proposed. And then the final plat is, so you can see kind of what's being recorded, um, with the county, by these, uh, the clouds in front of, but. These kind of give you an idea where the monuments and benchmarks are.
So that property doesn't go through to the corner of Maple and 183rd?
This is the street right here, so, and this is a training radius, you're turning at the corner of 183rd right here in Maple. It turns around and.
So the, the horse farm there will be gone?
Horse farm, I believe, is.
Yeah, I think the intention is to dim all those, okay, all the structure.
Depends on who you ask.
Oh.
There's lots of opinions that come to design, it's. There's, there is right there.
Okay. So I'm assuming they're gonna, they're gonna spend the extra money and run the sidewalk that runs up to 183rd and Maple over to the new park?
Yes, ideally, that would be what we were hoping to do is run it north south. Also, we were looking at using Lambo dollars that we've required for 183rd for modernizing 183rd to include. Um, an expanded pedestrian walkway from 183rd on east side to 183rd on west side.
Okay.
Um, but all those are pending, and, well, we've already been approved for that funding, it's, it needs to be formally approved, and that's probably 2023, 2022, somewhere around there, so. All these are working in tandem, they just happen in different intervals, so.
Is this the contingency of all the drainage areas, or is this just approved?
I don't think it's contingency upon the drainage, but, um. That is something we can do if we feel like it would be beneficial. The drainage plan won't come until we actually have design asked.
I would say, I would say you could tie it to the, the, the site development, when a site plan is developed for the property, that anyway, so.
You guys have to look at site plans for all the commercial properties, so. Unless it's.
Just approval of the, of the plat, yeah. Is that in the form of a motion?
Anybody else, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat as presented.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
I've made the staff report. Um, Brahms, the architect. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the architect representing Brahms has reached out to the given NSA of planning related requirements prior to pulling permits for construction. Uh, they anticipate pulling building permits and general construction permits for development in October, November of this year. Um, it's come to my attention that this architecture firm, the circle of Brahms now currently ousted the old architecture firm. And I don't know if that was one of the reasons why it's been delayed so long, but they want, Brahms currently has twelve restaurants they want to put in between now. And July of 2021, and so we're in that slot, we're seventh in line, and that's why they're hoping to finish two more before us. And so there's one, one in Texas that they're finishing now. By the time that's done, they're gonna go ahead and start with the formal, um, pulling of permits, which requires metropolitan area building construction department review. And then they, those permits come to us, and then they pay us, and then they pull the permits, and then they go out and start building. Uh, I reviewed the Brahms, um, planning commission minutes from, and so, uh, as far as I can tell, it has been approved in terms of. The site plan and the sign, I know there's a variance with the sign, and so those are currently standing. Uh, and so they don't need to do anything else there. There might be minor revisions to the site plan, in which case. If it's minor revisions, they can be approved in-house, I'll just approve them, you know, if it's, if they're gonna change the wall color, I don't think you guys even know about that. But if there's major changes to the site plan, it'll come back before the planning commission. For example, if they're gonna be adding in a hundred more parking lots or something to that extent, um, I think that would require a planning commission review. Um, all site plans ultimately up to me, well, and I'm wondering if for the planning commission, this came out last year, an official client was asking about that before last year, about why certain site plans and not others, and. Why am I involved with, uh, those site plans more than previously planners? Uh, and that's because I feel that when you present a site plan before the planning commission, it gets recorded in the minutes, and that way any citizen can actually check out the minutes. And it increases transparency of the city, so that's one reason. Um, also, I like to hear feedback, because even though I might have one opinion, it's good to have multiple opinions for review and refinement. So if they do, there's no formal regulation that says if they amend fifty percent, or eighty percent, or a hundred percent, it has to come back before the planning commission. But in my mind, fifty percent is a good trigger, and then that's when it's definitely gonna come back before the planning commission. And if I consider it, not even fifty percent, but if it's considered an intense, in my mind, site plan change, then that would have to be, I think, approved ultimately, ultimately before the planning commission. Um, once again, we have another conditional use permit for a detached garage. Just a quick review, um, property owner sixteen oh five East Elbridge would like to have the planning commission review of conditional use permit for a detached garage. The review part is seven hundred twenty square feet is what's in the subdivision regulations for detached garage, you can't exceed that. The only reason, the only way you could is if the planning commission approves a conditional use permit. So we went through that process on three oh one east first. Um, it's probably built yet, I don't know if you guys have seen it or not. Uh, this gentleman also wants to do something similar over at Elbridge, and. In Elbridge, that's not normal, we see lots of detached garages that are, um, uh, exceed seven hundred twenty square feet. So that's something that's gonna be coming up. I've already sent out the letters for this, and I sent it off to the paper to be published, we have to officially do the publishing. Send out the letters to everyone within two hundred feet of the property to notify them, so if they have any comments or feedback, they can come in and speak on the subject. Um, as we know from last time, nobody can speak, and so, granted, it was on a Zoom call, but nobody, zoomed in to talk about the subject matter. This time, it'll be before you face to face, um, the letters have been sent out certified, so if anybody wants to speak on this subject matter, this will be presented August tenth, next planning commission meeting. This, I'll turn over the planning commission comments. Question? No comments?
Nope. None?
Could, I guess my only comment is, and, and beating a dead horse. This, the sign deal, I, I just don't know where it's going, and, and I know, I know you've got tremendous amount of work tied up in it now. I guess it's just they have a shooter in me, and it's just good, and I'm just. And that's not fair.
Well, what would that, be that as made, I do appreciate that, because granted, I, I may be in the same boat as you, I can't formally say that, but of course, you know, I want it to be done as fast as possible too. Um, there still has to be the approval by the governing body as well, and to approve something now, you know, we may just get a bit later if the. Commercial businesses feel that we excluded them from the design process again. And that was one of the critiques that's been come up again and again, was the commercial business felt they were left out of the sign regulation review process. This time, we want to certainly include as much as possible and leave as much transparency and availability for comment review. So that way, everyone feels that they've contributed and that the sign ordinance that actually gets officially published and brought before the planning commission for acceptance, and finally before the governing body for acceptance. Everybody knows what's on it, there's no, there's no questions. Or else, as, uh, Commissioner Bacon had pointed out, we'll be back here in a year with, you know, upset business owners wondering why, you know, this is happening, and so.
Well, I, all you're seeing in me is impatience, and I apologize for that.
Apologizing, yes, sir.
I'll worry you to it. Well, I just want to see them take the signs down off the liquor store. Never cut and picking one up.
At least that dilapidated inside my head.
Yeah, the one that was a hazard, it was gonna fall, and somebody asked.
Yeah, that's a, it's maintenance and important, how, you know, how it looks ten years from now.
No, I think that's all.
Um, next regular planning commission meeting, it'll be August tenth, at seven twenty at seven P M.
For a motion.
I'll second.
All favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for attending.